I'd like to call to order the public hearing for school choice on Monday, June 12th, at Durfee High School. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. We have a quorum. A salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick couple of notifications. School committee member Paul Hart is joining us by Zoom. And pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do we have any citizens input, Deb? Charlie, are you here for the school choice?
Yes, is it too late?
No, go ahead. Talk right now.
Thank you.
Is that the only one on the sheet, Kenny?
Yes.
Yep, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Chase.
So start now?
Yeah, right now. You're up.
Well, I just wanted to say something, just a very simple something, that we have to get back to the main themes of education, that of teaching the kids common sense, ability to analyze, and not so much memorize what is being taught by the teacher or the text, but that they are able to analyze problems and come up with proper solutions, especially in math, science, English, and history, that we have true history taught here. If we don't know what has happened in the past, how are we going to stop having that return in the future? It's only by knowing what has gone on, and to disregard that, I feel is danger to the education of our children. Right now, we're probably around the thirtieth or so in the world as far as nations go. For math and sci-- that's for math and science. For math and science, when I was in high school, we were either first, second, or third. We were right up there at the top. And the pandemic, the way it was handled, different social things that are coming into the schools, these are injuring our children for generations to come. And we have to get it so that they are thinking students when they leave their school and the school system. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. This hearing is on school choice. Our school choice for outer district students in grades six to 12 for school year 23-24. Anyone like to comment on school Hearing none. School choice for non-resident students in grades K to five for the Farver Public School employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for 23-24. Any comment on that? I'll read them again, just so everybody's clear. This hearing is on school choice for outer district students in grades six to 12 for the 23-24 school year. And it's also for school choice for non-resident students in grades K to five for the Farver Public School employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for the 23-24 school year. Any comments? I'll read it one more time, so people can make a motion and vote to approve it. School choice for outer district students in grades six to 12 for the 23-24 school year. And school choice for non-resident students in grades K to five for the Farver Public School years employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for the 23-24 school year.
Motion to approve.
It's just adjourned. We're approving next meeting.
We'll pass it over. I'm sorry, Ms. Larrabee, I gave you some wrong information. Hearing no. Discussion points on that. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Farver School Committee for Monday, June 12th. Quickly, Paul Hart is joining us by Zoom. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia, Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. A salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. No citizens input for this meeting. There was one on the first meeting. We'll go right to the recognition awards. And as we do every year, the school committee will be honoring 35 of our retirees for the 22-23 year. We should probably go down.
There's no one here.
Oh, there's no one here? Okay. There's no one?
Do you want to read it from there?
There's nobody here.
Nobody.
Grace is not here.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just read off. Okay. So, on behalf of the recognition committee, we have the privilege of recognizing 35 retirees who have devoted their professional lives to serving students, families, and our communities. So we are incredibly grateful for the commitment, expertise, and passion that's played a crucial role in the work here in our district. And we turn it over to Superintendent Ponce to celebrate the dedication contribution of these staff members.
Thank you very much. I personally would like to thank all of the recipients for their years of service to Fall River Public Schools. We have people who have dedicated themselves to making our district better, and we appreciate you. So for Manuel Batello, custodian, facilities and operations, 37 years of service. Donna Cabral, who served as a clerk, and then the executive, the coordinator for student transportation, 37 years of service to Fall River Public Schools. Keith Green, custodian, facilities and operations, 31 years of service to Fall River. Christine Donovan, physical therapist assistant in the special ed department, 28 years of service. Brenda Boudreaux, teacher interventionist district-wide, and she's 27 years of service to Fall River Public Schools. Ralph Coy, paraprofessional for the district, 27 years of service. Kathy Richard, teacher, Carroll and Spencer Borden School, 25 years of service. Natalia Silva-Patterson, school adjustment counselor and vice principal throughout the district, 25 years of service. Susan Blackburn, paraprofessional at Green, 24 years of service. Grace Farias, teacher at Green, 24 years of service. Lori Gray, cafeteria worker in the nutrition department, 24 years of service. Darlene Eckard, paraprofessional in the district, 23 years of service. Karen Long, nurse and director of nursing for the district, 23 years of service. Rochelle Petnotti, teacher of fine arts, 22 years of service. Filomena Moreau, paraprofessional, special ed department, Sylvia School, 21 years of service. Joseph Patricio, plumber, facilities and operations, 21 years of service. Cynthia Silva, physical therapist assistant, special needs department, 21 years of service. Urania Carrero-Ferreira, teacher at Durfee High School, 20 years of service. Michael Di Almeida, custodian, facilities and operations, 20 years of service. Paul Gomes, custodian, facilities and operations, 20 years of service. Linda Batello, paraprofessional at Green School, 19 years of service. William Brown, music teacher for the district, 19 years of service. Maria LeBlanc, teacher at Spencer Borden, 18 years of service. Rafael Vila, teacher at Durfee High School, 18 years of service. Maria Maderas, cafeteria worker in the nutrition department, 17 years of service. Pamela Reinhardt, nurse, nursing department, 16 years of service. Gail Freitas, paraprofessional at Stone School, 13 years of service. Karen Sebastio, custodian, facilities and operation, 13 years of service. Edward Almeida, custodian, facilities and operations, 12 years of service. Sharon Solway, teacher, coach, interventionist at Talbot Middle School, 11 years of service. Michael Cabral, custodian, facilities and operations, 10 years of service. Sandra Rodriguez, parent community facilitator, district clerk, five years of service. Michelle Gilmet, speech language pathologist assistant, special ed department, four years of service. And Kevin Galloway, facilities and operations, one year of service. Thank you, everyone, for your dedication to Fall River Public Schools.
And again, I'll offer the same kind of recognition. Thanks, everybody, for their service. With that, now item number four is our subcommittee reports. Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Policy Subcommittee met on May 22nd. On the agenda that evening was several policy recommendations from the district. Superintendent Ponce gave an overview and explained the changes and recommendations that were made by MAS-C. The first agenda item was to review the addition on certain policies. The policies were consolidations of one or more existing policies into a new policy. District employee cell phone policy was referred for this technology Subcommittee for further vetting. The committee voted to refer the remaining policies to the full committee. The second agenda item was to recommend-- was a recommendation from MAS-C to be deleted. Mr. Cabral recommended removing the technology donation policy, and a suggestion was made to delete bring your own device policy to apply to students only. All these policies were referred to the full committee. The third agenda item was a group of policies that had minor language change or changed to legal reference or formatting. The Subcommittee reviewed the policies, and all policies were referred to the full committee. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. I believe that Mrs. Roderick has the Special Education Alternative Subcommittee report. Thank you.
Sure do. So, Special Ed, alternative at an early childhood, meaning met on June 5th. We did review Ms. Overton's request for additional administrative support within the special ed department. The primary responsibilities of that role are really centered around ensuring our special ed policies, procedures, and programming are in compliance with special education and DESI regulations. So we're really looking for this position to bridge some gaps between our schools and families as we build a strong department that supports our students in the way that they need to be supported. So that job description was referred here with suggestions for review and a vote. We also reviewed the expansion of our literacy instruction to target third graders and up with additional training and implementation of some targeted curriculum supports. We did review our current standards and mechanisms for credit recovery at the high schools, and additionally, the continuum of care within the special ed programs across the district. So some additional information was requested, so that way we can further explore what that continuity and equity looks like across student groups and programs. We did hold the discussion regarding RPA, and we're going to be reconvening at a later date.
Are you doing the next one also?
No, that one's not.
Okay, so we'll hold technology over the Subcommittee report till the next meeting. Item number five is the Superintendent's report. Superintendent Ponce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have a couple of updates. So Durfee and RLM, RPA, both held graduations on Thursday, June 1st, 2023. The Robert El Maderas Resiliency Preparatory Academy sent forth 51 scholars. Students, staff, and families gathered at Morton to celebrate the graduation certificate celebration. And on Friday, June 2nd, Durfee High School set forth 540 scholars at their graduation ceremony. Students, staff, and families gathered Friday evening to celebrate this milestone. We wish all of our graduates the very best as they move on to the next leg of their journey, be it the workforce, military, or college. And we thank all teachers, administrators, and staff and families for supporting them along the way. We also have a summer programming update. Every school in our district is offering summer programming opportunities for students. The programs vary by school, but what we are offering are enrichment programs, learning acceleration, credit recovery programs, academic support, and ESY. And some schools are offering a combination of a couple of them. For ESY or extended school year, that will be held at Sylvia for grades K through five from 8:30 to 1:30, Monday through Thursday. Laterno will host the pre-K from 8:30 to 1:30, full day, and half-day session will be 8:30 to 11:00 and 11:00 to 1:30. Durfee High School will host the grade six young adult program. And the special ed department will also be providing compensatory services at various locations, pending where the need is. Also, we are offering 21st Century Summer Programming at Doran. We are hosting July 6th through August 3rd, 8 to 2. Henry Lord, also same time, they will have 21st Century, Green, Morton, and Talbot. All have 21st Century programs being held at those schools. And Durfee High School also has some offerings. Durfee Summer School will be held on July 5th through August 3rd, Monday through Thursday from 8 to 12. It's open to Durfee High School students and surrounding high school students also. That's unlimited, so they usually host a few hundred students. 21st Century Community Learning Center will be held July 6th through August 3rd at Durfee High School. Learners and high-risk freshmen, that usually services about 120 students. Internship program, opportunity or grant to hire college and high school students to work as interns at the middle and elementary 21st Century program sites, so 10 students are going to be taking part in that. And Evolve is also hosting on July 5th through August 3rd, Monday through Thursday from 9 to 12. They also have an academy going on for any students who need additional support. And in addition to all of that, we have the Durfee Summer Enrichment Program for K to 12 students. Durfee Summer Enrichment will be held from July 5th until August 11th, Monday through Friday from 8 to 2. Various enrichment activities for K to 8 students take up. Students will take up up to four programs each day. Usually, that hosts about 150 students. Any parent who has questions regarding summer programming program offerings should contact their child's school directly so that they can get the information. And finally, we have a hiring update. Since our last school committee meeting, we have hired 62 folks, 28 teachers, eight administrative positions, 12 paraprofessionals, nine educational support positions, five operational support positions. And conversely, we have had 34 resignations, 64 teachers, four administrators, nine paraprofessionals, and five educational support positions. In regards to recruitment, we have a recruitment event scheduled for Wednesday, June 21st, from 12:30 to 4:00. And this event is going to take place at Cus Middle School in the community room. That's it.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any points? Now, item number seven is the approval of minutes. We have three sets. We have the approval--
Motion to approve all sets posted?
Second.
I'll read them. We have the Subcommittee meeting, instructional, 5:123. We have the public hearing from 5:1523, and we have the regular school committee meeting from 5:1523. We're approving three sets of minutes. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of travel requests.
Motion to approve all travel requests posted?
We have a motion to approve all travel requests. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on travel? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is our acceptance of donations. We have two donations tonight. One for Watson from Project Lead the Way for $7,000, and one from the Green Middle School from Dr. Dunn, 35 cases of Pure Life Water and 34 cases of Poland Springs Water. Could I get a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Deb, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I know, I kind of said, I'm sorry, buddy.
Yeah, you did. That's okay. From Project Lead the Way to Watson Elementary School, Principal Hoag accepts $7,082, Project Lead the Way, for Project Lead the Way material kits, replacement kits, and teacher training. And from Ready Fresh Blue Triton, Green Elementary to Green Elementary School, Dr. Elizabeth Dunn accepts 35 cases of Pure Life Water, 34 cases of Poland Spring Water, and refreshments for PTO events and Field Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item number 10 is the approval of contracts. Now, we have a number of them, and as we always do, if anyone has any they want to pull out. Ms. Roderick, which one?
Can we pull out Diamond?
I'm sorry.
The Diamond contract?
The Diamond contract, okay.
And the lighting system?
And the Diamond contract and the lighting system. Anything else? Mr. Bailey?
The Diamond contract for cost for the Farver Public School.
Yeah.
She just took that one. That was Ms. Roderick, okay.
The lighting.
So Diamond and lighting. Then can I get a motion to accept the others?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. So, speaking to the Diamond contract, Ms. Roderick.
I just, I just need to abstain from that vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bailey, you also--
I have to abstain as well.
You're abstained as well. Oh, so we have two abstentions. So we, oh no, we have a quorum.
Yeah.
All right, so can we get a motion and a second to accept the Diamond contract with abstention?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion to accept. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia, Mr. Bailey?
Abstain.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Abstain.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Lighting contract?
Yep. Mr. Pacico, I just have, can you just give a little background on that? I don't know if I missed any dialogue.
The Barbers on lighting contract for Cus.
For Cus. So, the, the system that's in Cus right now is, is in disrepair, but it also was not a system that we have matched in other, in other theaters. So, it's an upgrade, along with the board and other devices within the, within the system. It's going to be paid out of school improvement money. I'm sorry, school use money and a combination of other items. But it's, it's the most used theater we have, so it does, it does get a lot of use. And we've had some, I don't want to say complaints, but some, some interest in whether or not we were going to upgrade that system. So, that's where we stand.
So it's vastly different from--
It's different. It's just, it wasn't robust, as robust as, as this, obviously, but also Morton.
Right. So it's just simply the--
Upgrades, yeah. It, it does have, it does have a few more bells and whistles. You know, the system is an upgrade, so it is going to be, for those who've used that theater before, this will definitely be a positive improvement.
Just, can you mention some of, you know--
I don't have the details. I'm, Scott--
Well, I mean--
So the upgrade is going to provide for new fixtures, new control. It's called DMX control, new lighting board. Basically, it's going to mimic the other auditoriums that we have, so that when Mr. Bigelow and his crew work an event, everything can be programmed, and that can actually be, the program can be used in different areas. Right now, we have basically used paperclips to keep that system together. And when there's a rental, Ken or myself get a phone call that the lighting system fails, and we have people there renting the facility. So this is just going to be lighting, rigging, wiring, and the main control board for the, the system.
Did we get bids?
So, Barbers on is one of the only ones that, it's state contract pricing, and they're a sole source. And they've done all of our auditoriums. So in order to try to keep it uniform across the board, for us to be able to preventive maintenance moving forward, we went with Barbers on.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Any further discussion on the lighting? I'm looking for a motion and a second to accept.
Second.
Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay. Next item is grants, and we have none tonight. Committee of the whole, we took that up earlier in the public hearing. I'm looking for a vote to approve school choice--
Motion to approve.
--for grades six to 12 outer district and grades K to five for non-resident students. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion on school choice. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 12.2 is an update and presentation on Coaching for Change by Marquise Taylor and Drew Woodward, Director of Guidance.
Good evening, everyone. We're here to give you a brief update and overview of the Coaching for Change program. I'm excited to be partnering with Marquise Taylor and Victoria here for this presentation. And I'm going to turn it over to Marquise now.
Thank you, guys, for this opportunity to update you guys. My three objectives today is update you guys on the Coaching for Change model, talk about the progress, talk about what's next, and then give you guys an opportunity to give us a quick Q and A. So I'm, I'm not going to go through every slide. We, I think you guys have the packet. It's kind of long, and Drew's been very specific. Keep it, keep it to 10 minutes. So, Coaching for Change, over the last three years, we've been focused in on providing additional supports to kids by bringing college students into schools. Historically, we've been an after-school program, but over the last two years, we've piloted an in-school model to fill the gaps because of the staffing needs, the urgent needs of young people, and really using our college students as added support to help young people in a myriad of ways. Right now, we're, we're having our college students help in one of three ways. They're either academic support, providing academic support. They're helping guidance counselors with behavior, or they're supporting family outreach and engagement. And so our college students are trained on mentoring, de-escalation, diversity, equity, and inclusion, academic support strategies, first aid mental health, and small group facilitation. The, the last year, we, we, three of those are brand-new first aid mental health, diversity, equity, and inclusion, academic support strategies, to make sure that our college students are equipped with what is needed. And over the last couple of years, we've been tweaking our program to, to improve how we work with principals, how we work with our site staff also. And, yeah, that's a little bit more of what we talked about. And then, so this is how we've been working with our school staff around communication. Victoria, do you want to?
So, these are just a few ways that we communicate with the school staff from us at Coaching for Change. So I'm one of the hub managers for Fall River, so I communicate with our coaches at the school. We have monthly meetings where we talk about the successes that the program has had, as well as wins, maybe things that could go better. And we put a bunch of coaches and site directors from the different schools in Fall River in a meeting with me and Drew, so we can all talk about ways that like, oh, maybe Cus has a strategy that will work for Morton. So it's a really great way just to facilitate and have conversations. We also hold an in-person training for our coaches, where they get to meet their mentors beforehand, and they're able to kind of make a strategy for the school-- to meet their mentors beforehand, and they're able to kind of make a strategy for the school year. So, they all go in prepared, ready to meet their students with a strategy in mind. And then, we also do end-of-the-year debriefs with the principals and the coaches, where we can talk about kind of what to expect for the next year coming, so we're all on the same page. But these are just the strategies that we use, so we can stay in communication, so nothing gets swept under the rug, and we all have a clear kind of way that we talk. And that kind of goes into our mentor management as well, so we don't leave them out. We also have an in-person training for them. We have mandatory check-ins that our college coordinators will do with our mentors, so there's just a one-on-one check-in, so that they can talk about anything that's going on. We also have college coordinator support, so whenever our mentors need any kind of support, they have that college coordinator there to help them. And then, we also have our trainings, which we went over before, and we also created a handbook that has a bunch of, you know, warm-ups that they can do with the kids, ways to help the kids if they ever get stuck and need immediate help.
So, in your, in your packet, you have some specific information about the number of students served and the number of mentors that are at each of our middle schools, and that's what this slide is showing. Overall, if we can go to the next slide, Coaching for Change has served eight-hundred-and-forty-seven middle school students this year, and that was compared to five-hundred-and-seventy students last year. And one of the big changes or enhancements this year is that Coaching for Change has been piloting their in-school model with three of our middle schools, so that they can support and mentor more students.
So, one of the key strategies we're trying to implement right now is making sure we're bringing in diverse college students that have this, have similar backgrounds to the students they're serving. So, this is just a quick demographic of what our college students, male, female, students of color. And one of our key strategies is being able to identify college students that are not going down a education path, right? So, they couldn't be, they potentially could be criminal justice majors, sociology majors, social work majors, and not thinking of a career in education. They're spending anywhere from four to twelve hours in the schools, working directly with kids. And through seeing, through watching young people grow and change, they're beginning to see themselves as educators and wanting to pursue a career in education. So, I'll, Victoria, talk a little bit about the stories.
Yeah, so if you read, these are just some stories that we've had from our coaches. That photo is two of our mentors, Royale and Connor, and that is Emily from CUS. So, they had a great time with their after-school program. But if you want, you can read those stories. It is really just them saying how, you know, they've seen a change with their students, their students have been able to connect with them, they've been able to kind of see, you know, not only the college mentors take leadership and be able to practice their facilitation and their leadership skills, but the students also learning from them and being able to be leaders themselves.
And so, this is some of the, the coach, the college students' survey data.
Hello. My name is Nathan Patello, and I was a Coaching for Change college mentor in the summer of 2022. I am currently working as a social studies teacher at Matthew J. CUS Middle School. This would not be possible without the partnership between Fall River Public Schools and Coaching for Change, as it was Coaching for Change that placed me at CUS and led to a job offer and my current position at the school. Coaching for Change has also allowed me to connect with some of my students, and they have all said that they would love to do it again next year, even asking for more resources and time with it.
And so, that's one of our college students that were hired, that was hired by Fall River Public Schools. And so?
Hello. My name is Nathan Patello.
There we go, okay. And so, on the chart here, these are college students that worked in Fall River, and you'll notice that some of them got hired outside of the district. So, now that we have a better understanding of what the program format is going to look like during the school day and after school, this upcoming year, our major focus is really becoming more intentional and strategic around how we attract our college students to get jobs here in Fall River. Our intention is that sixty percent of our college students end up, that mentor here in Fall River will get jobs here. So, that's one of the things that we're really looking to, to enhance this year. And then, so this is, to end on a, with COVID, we ended our, our college visits, but this year, we were able to get a college visit back in. And here's a quick video of them visiting Stone Hill College. So, we just wrapped up an amazing day at Stone Hill College in northeastern Massachusetts, where we hosted a college field trip for the middle school students of Henry Lord Community School in Fall River. This was, for a lot of them, their first time at Stone Hill College, and for several of them, first time on a college campus in general. A lot of students from the communities we work with only hear about the colleges that are right next to where they grew up, and don't get the exposure to colleges that just might be a little bit farther down the road. And so, we get a lot of pleasure and beautiful moments, bringing college students to see what is available for them when they get to this level.
What's up? I'm Moses, and this is me visiting Stone Hill. It's really cool. I would enjoy being here.
Oh, it means the world to me, actually, because this is why I want to do this. I want to be in education, because I want to be a part of the process of students reaching their full potential. It is especially impactful for us when the college students themselves get to show the students in middle school around their college campus. And so, two amazing college mentors for Coaching for Change took our middle school students around, showing them where they go to class, where their dorms are, where their friends hang out, and all of the cool amenities that are available to them, including the gyms and fields and recreation places.
It's just super rewarding, honestly, just going and knowing that you make an impact and you make some of their days, honestly. Sometimes you're the reason they want to go to school, and they just love hanging out with you. So, that's really just one of the most rewarding things that I learned from.
It's really important to be able to have someone or kids to look up to and to talk to and turn to, because sometimes they may not have that at home, so you can always be that person for them.
I'm here because of CFC, and I want to go to college.
Definitely join CFC. Just go out there and just get involved, and you'll love it.
It was really a special day for us here. We hope to keep doing this moving forward, so that we can show our growing students what life can be like if you stay on path to graduate and persist. So, we have more slides, but we won't go through them, but we'll open up if you guys have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Coaching for Change? No, it was an excellent presentation. Ms. Larrabee?
Just quick. I, how are you? Thank you for the presentation.
Good.
Very well done. I love this program. But I see that the numbers in each school fluctuate a little bit from in-school, out of school, but as school to school, they differ a lot. So, can you just explain why that is?
Definitely. So, some schools are, we're doing after-school programming, where we've struggled with enrollment. Other schools, we've been able to really build up enrollment. And so, we've, we've been able to pilot, or not pilot, but go back and forth between finding and figuring out different strategies to be able to grow it. And we're still figuring out what the in-school model looks like exactly. But that, that's kind of where, trying to figure out what, what it looks like at each school. That's why the numbers vary from school to school.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Also, I see the eight forty-seven. It's not on my screen, but we know it was slower last year, right, compared to this year. It looks like the numbers are really getting high. Do you have any expectation for each school as the numbers, I guess, where you see them?
Yeah. So, I thi, I think it varies from school to school, based on whether it's an in-school program or an after-school program.
Okay.
So, if it's in-school, we're starting to notice that we can reach more students, because if they're going into the classroom, and they're there for three to four periods, that's fifteen to twenty kids at a time. Whereas, in the after-school model, they're going to serve anywhere from six to ten students on a, on a day-to-day basis.
Right. Does each school have a, an expectation of how many students we want to put through the program?
Sure. So, that's a good question. In the after-school program, all five schools do have an after-school program. Our goal is really to have thirty students or more going into next year for the after-school program. For the in-school model, it depends on the college mentors. Some schools want one college mentor, others are piloting two or three. So, the more college mentors that are placed in school, the more students would be served.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Ms. Roderick?
How are kids identified to participate? So, after-school, I'm assuming is a sign-up, but what does that look like during the school day?
So, during this, during the school day, it all depends on what classes they feel as though need that help. For example, in Talbot, they have a mentor that works with kids with behavioral issues in a class, where she's able to talk to them, kind of give them that one-on-one support. In other schools, it may be, you know, maybe a math class that like some of the kids are falling behind in, so they'll place a mentor in there to work one-on-one with those kids in that class. And then, it really just depends. If they feel like the kids might need a boost in their ESL classes, they'll have a mentor go in there to help them. So, it's really what we talk about in like the meetings, like, you know, where do you feel like you might want to place these mentors?
Does that stay consistent? Like, once they're assigned to a classroom, do they stay in that classroom, or are they rotating?
Some schools rotate, some keep them in a single classroom.
Okay. I had one other question, and it just went out. So, when it comes back to me, I will ask. So, I yield for now.
Anything further for Coaching for Change?
So, my question was just, typically, what grades do you see the highest enrollments for students in? And then, also, working primarily with the middle school, correct?
Yeah.
How do we, I guess this is a question for ourselves. How do we assure that those kids who go to high school, we're sticking with them as well? Because it seems like you guys are doing a great job. I'm looking at that, you know, that kid who leaves Coaching for Change in middle school and then goes to high school, to still kind of have those relationships with mentors, because I do think that's important, to continue those relationships. So, for the first part, one of the things that we noticed that we, one of the strategies we talked with Amy about, her big strategy was, or Amy Ronhardt, she had a sixth-grade, homegrown type of strategy, which has allowed us to really grow and become a part of a community. And so, that's a strategy we're going to try and pilot in other schools. Rather than, than it being an eighth grade or seventh grade experience, start at a younger age to make it more integrated in the middle school culture across the, all the middle schools. As it relates to the high school, we're trying to explore how to integrate or use Coaching for Change with early college. We don't know exactly what that looks like. Pre-pandemic, we had it so that the high school students were working in the after-school model. And so, we're still trying to understand how to, how to bring those two things back together with school schedules and busing and everything else.
Ms. Pereira?
Yeah, just a quick question. You had mentioned that some schools have one mentor, some have two. What, how is that determined? Is it's lack of mentors? Is it principals determining? What is the determining factor, lack of mentors? You're both nodding. Okay.
Yeah, so I guess it all depends if the school, it's really principal-dependent. We can kind of talk to them, like, you know, we have this many mentors. How many do you feel would work good with your school? For example, Talbot, again, I talk a lot with Talbot, but they only needed one in school this semester, because they felt as though like the students-to-mentor ratio, that's just what worked. And they had one mentor that was willing to do it, so they're like, that's good for us. It just depends on, again, how many students they're looking to serve that year, if they're able to manage more than one mentor, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Love the program. Thank you both for all the important, really important work you do.
That's it, Mayor.
Oh, hey, guys. Appreciate it. Coaching for Change, all the way. Thanks for coming down, giving us an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twelve-three is a discussion and vote to approve the use of the former Durfee High School Music Wing at the Nagel Auditorium from the Massachusetts National Guard. Two-hundred-and-fifteenth Army Band from July one to December thirty-one twenty-four is presented by Ken Pacico.
So, this request came before us quite a while ago, before COVID, and the committee approved the use of, of the auditorium. COVID hit. The renovation project that's causing them to leave their armory was delayed. It's well underway in the design stage now, and they're looking for occupancy in July, so that they can continue work. The, there's two units in, that work out of that particular armory. The one that's requesting the use of, of Durfee is, of the Nagel, is the two-hundred-and-fifteenth band. So, they're looking for, obviously, rehearsal, practice, and then the, the quarters themselves. There'll probably be three to four people who will be there daily. And then, on the one weekend a month or whenever they do regular exercise, it would be a full, a full weekend, a full week, I'm sorry. And then, in the summertime, it would be a two-week stint. So, there'll always be activity there, Monday through Friday, once in a while on the weekends. And it's strictly for the music wing and the auditorium. We do have a couple of issues in some of those areas. It, it may or may not rain on them, and they know those areas. They've already walked through them. They do remember what we had showed them when they were back. And it's really not much worse than what it was back then. No battery either. So, they know what they're moving into. We are going to secure that area for them, so that no one can get into their area, nor will they be able to, you know, go anywhere else in the building. There's plenty of space, more than, or at least equal to what they have currently. And that's the request. This is, the letter is, is the request, and then they will draw up a formal document and, and get that to us for signature if it is approved.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Second.
So, the old Durfee Auditorium, I have a motion and a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dragu, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve-point-four is a discussion and vote to approve the addition of the following policies referred by the?
Motion to approve.
And presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. Mr. Coogan?
These, these policy changes come in three separate buckets, as explained by Committee Manhart earlier this morning. He's the chair of the Policy Subcommittee. The first group of policies is really just these two, we'll call them consolidated policies. They take one or more policies and just merge them into a single unit. Conversely, you'll note that, that in the section that recommends some deletion of some policies are those policies that are related to this. As we merge them into one, we're going to delete the other separate policies. So, there's really just those two policies as recommended. There's no significant language changes in either of these groups.
Any, any discussion? Deb, would you please call the roll on twelve-point-four?
Ms. Dragu, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve-point-five is discussion and vote to approve the deletion of the following policies referred by the Policy Subcommittee and presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that one? Deb, would you please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Roderick.
Can we just clarify what those were, just so that we folks know?
So, there are a number of policies that are either redundant, because they are covered in law or regulation. If you'll notice, the first five or six policies at the bottom of page nine of the agenda, those are the policies that were just consolidated in the previous motion by the committee. Some of the other policies that are on the second page there, again, are either covered by a, a law or reg, and with the exception of the technology donation policy, which is not necessary due to, one, the district's capacity for supplying technology now, as well as security requirements that force us to not take technology from the outside. And those last two are technology policies that were deleted but referred over to the Subcommittee for reconsideration in another form.
I appreciate the explanation, just so that folks knew what we were voting on. I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll on twelve-point-five.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Dragu, Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.6 is the discussion and vote to approve the updated policies as referred by the Policy Subcommittee and presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director.
The policies contained herein, this particular release of policies, typically we get them a couple of times a year from the school committee, and Deb feeds them out to the committee in, in smaller bunches. This particular group was significant. It was between 80 and 90 policies. These policies that you see here, the significant, there's no significant changes. Typically, what the policy does, it either refers to a new law that updates and, and doesn't change the language of the policy. It's just the legal reference at the end of the policy has changed. In some cases, it's the, the gender pronouns that are in the old policy. He, she gets changed over to their to make it more gender neutral in the language. And there may be some small grammatical corrections in the language. In one or two cases, we have a policy that we've worked with an attorney on the outside, Michael Joyce, or Attorney Assad, to, to improve the language from the MASCE or to, to adopt it to, to our own. So we would ask that these policies be adopted in a group. And the second half of this release will be dealt with in a second meeting. There are a few items that require a little further discussion that we've pushed off to the second group, so that we can dig into them a little more. And those will come back to the committee either next month or the month after.
Any discussion? Ms. Pereira?
And I think I've mentioned this before, but do we have a policy that addresses our, like Zoom, using Zoom for these meetings and such?
We adopted a policy during the COVID restrictions. Most of those have gone away. However, if we need to adopt one, like for the case of Mr. Hart tonight, we'd have to do a second policy and reenact that. But in most cases-
Just in general, I've mentioned it before. I think it makes sense that, it's great that we can use technology. I'm all for it. But I know where, where I'm employed, we have a policy. I'm sure the teachers probably have a policy, yeah. Especially when going to executive session, I just think it makes sense. Go ahead.
Shell, it was extended by the governor to 25. It's a state regulation.
Okay.
That's why we use Zoom tonight.
Okay.
We, we, we thought the deadline ended, but the governor had extended it.
Okay. But it wasn't really necessarily a question about tonight. If, is this, once that ends, are we able to continue to use Zoom?
No.
Or no? Okay. That's what I'm asking. If we're going to continue to use it, I think a policy in place would be good just to cover ourselves. But if we don't need it, because we're only going to have it for a little while, that's fine, too. Thank you.
I need a motion and a second. Oh, Mr. Bailey, I'm sorry, buddy.
So these are just the ones that were amended, and the other ones are going to come before the Subcommittee that you-
Correct. There's a second batch that you'll get in the next month or two.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-7 is discussion and vote to approve the Director of Grants Program Job Description is presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director, and Dr. Tracy Curly, Assistant Superintendent.
As part of our updating of job descriptions, the previous holder of this particular role has submitted a notice to retire. So in looking at the job description, which had a different title, Director of School Improvement and Leadership, we're converting it back over to a Director of Grant Programs. This is essentially your Title I, Director Job Description. This particular position also involves a number of grants, Title I, Title II, Title III. There's a number of them, as well as the 21st Century Programs, which have multiple sites throughout the district. So this position of Grant Manager or Grant Director is the one that's been retooled and updated to, to have the language of the, the new job duties associated with that position.
Any discussion? Can I get a motion and a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-8 is a discussion and vote to approve the Early College Coordinator Counselor Job Description is presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director, and Juw Woodward, Director of Guidance.
Mr. Woodward's here to help me with any particular questions about the job. I'd just like to sort of frame it for the committee. This job is essentially a guidance counselor position. However, it does have some specific duties that are not typical to the regular guidance counselor role at the high school. The early college program will be somewhere between 250 and 300 students next year. So the normal assignment of students in the building for their regular class needs and their other coursework falls to the cadre of, of guidance counselors that we have at the high school. This particular position is designed to support those students in the early college program and has a particular focus on those students who are not typically well-represented at the college level. And it's designed to make those Tier Two and Tier Three interventions and help those students be successful in the early college program. I think the committee would be familiar with a certain profile of student that comes from a background that makes the transition to college fairly easy for, for the student. However, they may have family members and other people that they're following in the footsteps of, and they know what's needed to be successful at that level. These, these other students would be the ones that may need some extra support. They may be the first member of a family to be going on to college or participating in the early college program. And the workload is a little bit different at the college level. So this position would support those students. And that's not typically what happens with a regular guidance counselor who's concerned with getting a student through ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grades. So this particular position is, is basically a guidance counselor position, but it's tailored to support those students who have taken on the challenge of the early college program. And I'll let Mr. Woodward assist me with any particular questions, because he's more well-versed in it. But that's, that's the basic cap, capsule of the, the job.
Ms. Lawrie?
Thank you. Two-part question. Remind me how many students are in the early college, again. And second question is, who is responsible for these responsibilities now, servicing the kids in the program now?
Sure. So this current school year, we have 244 students in the early college program.
And you said what number is expected for next year?
Next year is over 300. We're projecting between 315 and 330 for next school year. Currently, the coordination of the MTSS system of support, it's kind of split up. It's kind of an all-hands-on-deck. I do some of that work. The early college advisors do some of that work. The academic specialist does some of that work. And the counselors that are spread throughout the building do some of that work. And we envision, especially with the growing and expanding population that we're seeing, and we are hoping to continue that growth, is that there really needs to be a person who is the centerpiece of that coordination and support. So we envision this person really building and progress monitoring the multi-tiered system of support, working with our partners at the three institutions of higher ed and our nonprofit partners, along with the Durfee staff members who are involved. And really, as Mr. Coogan said, really focusing Tier Two and Tier Three supports in a primary person model for the students who need the most support.
Thank you. Ms. Woodward, would it be possible if you could just send us just a breakdown of all the staff members who are involved with early college, just so I can get, I can see, or we can see, you know?
Absolutely.
That's all.
Absolutely.
But I yield.
We'll do that for Friday email.
Yep. Thank you.
Any further questions? Ms. Roderick?
So when we're talking about a caseload for this particular position, what are we thinking? Will it be all 300 that we're anticipating?
No. So we're thinking a reduced caseload because of the coordination of support responsibilities that is also attached. And also, these students are some of the students who may be a little bit more academically fragile. Maybe they're coming from an underrepresented subgroup that needs a little, little more support to make that transition to college easier. So we're, we're thinking approximately 40 to 50% of a normal caseload, 30 to 40 students per grade level, and then along with the other responsibilities.
What's the current caseload for the other guidance counselors?
So for the, for the typical counselor, it's typically between 250 and 300 students. We have some specialized counselors as well, such as a counselor specific for English Language Learners at the foundational level, and a counselor for students with disabilities, specifically, that has lower, reduced caseload because of some of the specific responsibilities and supports needed to support those, those students. There are also three counselors who work with the CTE programs.
I yield.
Anything further on 12.8? Mr. Bailey?
As you know, I mean, USPI days, I, I think this is long overdue. So typically, we're looking at like the ninth, 10th grade students who, who need that support, correct?
Yeah. So we're typically onboard towards the end of ninth grade, and the early college program starts for grade 10, and it goes through grade 12. So typically, in grade 10, students will, will take an early college seminar or kind of prep class or onboard, on-ramp class. They also may take a college course to get their feet wet. And then in junior and senior year, they take two or more classes per semester. And the idea really is for them to have a semester or two of college complete by the time they graduate.
That was my only question. Pretty much. I'll tell the questions. I yield.
Anything further on 12.8? Could I get a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-9 is a discussion and vote to approve the Clerk Special Education Department Job Description as referred by the Special Education, Alternative Education and Early Childhood Subcommittee, as presented by Tom Coogan, Director of Human Resources, and Laurie Obenshane, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education.
So previously, the clerk job description was rather generic. It only contained the first, I would say, five or six items in the duties and responsibilities of the job description. As Assistant Superintendent Obenshane came onboard, she wanted to get a better defined sense of the responsibilities of that position. And so she's worked back and forth with the clerical union representatives to talk about what those specific duties might be, and really just to call them out, to show how that role is different than a regular clerk in a school setting, or a clerk in payroll, or something else. So it's just a little bit finer design of the position. I would call the committee's attention to items six through 19 here, which hats off to Ms. Obenshane for working with the, the Clerks Union in discussing any questions and answering any back and forth with that to make sure that those duties really reflect what the, what the special ed clerks are actually doing at this time.
Any discussion on item 12-9?
Nope, me.
Ms. Roderick?
I just want to say that I appreciate the, going through these positions and, and checking on the specificity and the, what's the word I'm looking for? Sort of the, I guess, the efficiency of how certain things are done, because I think that's something that's been lacking in our department for quite a while. So I just wanted to put that out there, that I think these are much-needed changes. And just speaking as a special education parent who may not see all of this, but this then helps the workflow that then gets to our students. So the end of the day really is about supporting our kids and our families, and this kind of stuff is, is really what we need. So I'm just pointing it out that I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I yield.
Anything further? I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Motion approved.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-10 is discussion and vote to approve the Chief Officer of Special Education Compliance Job Description as referred by the Special Education, Alternative Education, Early Childhood, and presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director, and Laurie Obenshane, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education.
I'm just going to, again, frame the, the job description for the committee. The committee has been generous in its offer to support the efforts of Ms. Obenshane to sort of streamline and make the department more efficient, but also to respond to the specific needs of the current circumstances. This position is a, is a new position relating to special education compliance. Ms. Obenshane's been very thoughtful about the, the needs and the situations that the department has been confronted with, most recently over the last couple of years. And this position is tailored to help address those needs and support her, to allow her to continue with the other important work that she's doing. She's certainly much better versed at this position than I am, so I'll let her answer the questions on it. But I'll hand it over to Ms. Obenshane.
This is that position for the number-two person for special education, Ms. Obenshane, which we have discussed, but I would like to know if anyone has any questions or discussion points on this one. Mr. Bailey?
I just wanted to ask, obviously, because we've been going through this, does this kind of suit what you were looking for in terms of like the position?
If this, yes, it is absolutely what I was looking for in terms of the position. Like I said before, the amount of hours compliance takes in a district this large, it's overwhelming for my current staff, as well as myself. Just responding to hearing requests and BCA mediations, again, is taking up precious time from people being in classrooms, with students, with staff, and for me to do the programming and visionary work that needs to be done.
Anything further? Ms. Roderick?
Again, I think this is a much-needed position, because you're right, the amount of time that we spend focusing on compliance, or not focusing on compliance, rather, has really done us a disservice. So I'm hoping that by adding some of these pieces, that what we can do is free up our folks that are, are working with our kids, with our staff every single day, that we can then support them in doing the work that they need to do, so they're not backed down by this piece. In addition, I'm hoping that this lowers the number of compliance issues that we have, because we have somebody overseeing it. So with that in mind, you know, I think this is long overdue. We have a huge district and a huge special education department.
And the other thing I hope that it does is that builds back some trust with families, because when families are filing for a hearing, or a BCA mediation, or just filing PRS complaints, the trust is broken somewhere. So we need to repair that. And with better oversight of this, and we can avoid these things moving forward, for sure.
I yield.
Anything further? I'll entertain a mo, do we have a motion and a second yet, Deb?
No.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-11 is discussion and vote to approve the Specialized Programming Curriculum as referred by the Special Education, Alternative Education, Early Childhood, and presented by Stephanie Kennedy, Director of English Language Arts.
Hi. We are hoping to expand our current intervention programming for students who have phonological deficits. So those are deficits in the child's ability to decode English accurately, which is holding them back from reading fluently, which is holding them back from comprehending text. So currently, in the district, we have Project REED happening in our lower grades. We're hoping to expand the use of Project REED and train up all interventionists and special educators that would be providing Tier Three services to the students that we are targeting. Additionally, we're hoping to expand into the middle school and potentially up into the high school with a program called Linguistics, which is just the older, older child program of Project REED. And so our hope is to have a thread of phonological programming happening from K until kids no longer need it. And we'd like to train up all staff that would be providing that intervention.
Any discussion on the curriculum? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia? Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Thank you.
12-2 is a discussion and vote to approve the Project Manager Technology Services Job Description as referred by the Technology Subcommittee and presented by Scott Cabral, the Chief Information Officer, and Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. Cabral? Mr. Cabral.
So this position is going to encompass a lot of the new technologies that we have in the district as well as oversee that realm of technology with the security infrastructure, card access, and just be another tier of support to run all these major projects that take away from my day-to-day operations in the central office.
Any questions for Mr. Cabral? Any questions for Mr. Cabral? I have a motion in a second. Hearing nothing, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia. Mr. Bailey. Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yep. 12-13 is discussion and vote to approve the district employee's cell phone policy as referred by the Technology Subcommittee and presented again by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer. Mr. Cabral.
So up until this point, we did not have a district employee cellphone policy. So any employee that has a district-owned device moving forward, there is a, basically a contract that has to be signed. We will also be starting July 1st to use some more security measures in place for those district devices. This was referred by the Technology Subcommittee to just put some strength and language into the contract, which is in red there in your packets. And it was unanimously referred to the full committee.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. I have a motion in a second, Deb?
No, I need a motion.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia. Mr. Bailey. Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12-14 is a discussion and vote to approve security cameras in school policies as referred by the Technology Subcommittee and presented by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Cabral, you want to tell us what that is?
So this is just updated language from the MASC. There was some strengthened language put in there from the district, just basically regarding the use of security cameras in schools. And part of the discussion from the Technology Subcommittee meeting is over the summer, Mr. Pacheco and I will be having signs installed over the property that just lets people know that video recording is in progress at all time on our properties.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Deb, would you please?
We do, Mayor.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia. Mr. Bailey. Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12-15 is discussion and vote to approve the VoIP wireless phone purchase as referred by the Technology Subcommittee and presented by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer. Mr. Cabral.
So this is going to start at Durfee High School and then work its way down to the other buildings. Currently, our security guards only carry a radio. This device will allow them to have communication with offices, with individuals in the building, teachers. It will dial within the building. It can also dial 911 in the event of an emergency, and the devices can be used on any of our properties. So it's just going to strengthen the tools that the security guards have on a day-to-day basis.
Excellent. Any questions? Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia. Mr. Bailey. Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12-16 is discussion and vote to approve the district firewall upgrade purchase as referred by the Tech Subcommittee and presented again by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer.
So I'll be brief here. Our current firewall is getting to end-of-typical use with the advances in our bandwidth and our dark fiber network across the city. It's time to take a look at our firewall and upgrade it as we move forward with our new devices across the district, just to strengthen and safeguard our network.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Can I get a motion in a second or discussion?
I need a motion.
I just want to clarify for folks like what that's going to look like. Just, we're voting on it, and I just want to make sure that people are aware of what it is. So you said that, like, we're going to replace that, but what does implementation look like and what would that mean for our networks? Just again, so that we, people are aware of what we're voting on.
So just for the, you know, the edification of the public, a firewall is something that many of us don't see. It's just a piece of appliance that lives in the server room that basically filters out all the bad things that a student could possibly get to and/or a staff. It also protects our data flow in and out. Currently, our projected timeline will be second week of August. I will be in with our team on a Friday night. We will take the old firewall down while maintaining the security and then bringing the new one back online. You will notice this will be done in conjunction with the vendor. We are first in this, but a project of this size and magnitude, we will have the vendor working with us hand-in-hand for this transition.
I appreciate it. You had described the other ones, so I just wanted clarification on that one. That's all. I yield.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes, hi. I just want to reiterate again for the public that everything that Mr. Cabral has mentioned in the last four, maybe five discussions were heavily vetted in the Subcommittee meetings.
Yep.
So I just want to, you know, make that clear for the public. Like, we're kind of speeding through this. None of us have questions, but there were some great presentations that night at the Subcommittee meeting, and I applaud, I love the new phone thing, that, well, the security. I mean, that's a, that's a great tool to have, starting at the high school. So I yield.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in a second, Deb?
Motion approved.
No, I need a motion.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia. Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12-17 is a discussion and vote to approve nutrition contract as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer.
So we are prepared to enter into a one-year contract with a four-year renewal to Witsen's Food Service. They have been our contractor for the last 12 years. They put in a proposal, and the proposal was well-done. We had one other proposal from a company, also well-done. The value of Witsen's in the district outweighed the other proposal, and the price proposal from Witsen's was comparable to the other proposal. The, it is one-year renewals. We've been doing this with them. So with food service, it's one contract at a time. Gives you an opportunity to evaluate what's happening over the course of the year and then listen to their proposal when they come back for the one year, for the renewal. Their price is comparable, a slight increase from last year with the, with this particular contract. So this will go from here, if approved, to the state for an approval, which is why I say unsigned contract. We need to have the state look at the contract first. If they approve it, it'll come back to us for signature, and we will ratify that contract before the July 1. We start up with summer program, à la carte service, catering service, I should say, with CD rec for the summer programs and meals in the park.
Any discussion on that? Ms. Roderick.
So you just said catering was the CD rec program?
So ca—it's not catering. It's catering.
Okay.
It's not, yeah, it's not à la carte. So we cater to them. They are the ones, they are the contractor for the summer meals, and we just provide the meal to them.
Okay. Because that was my question, because I saw catering on here and I didn't know
That's exactly.
Where that fit in. So that's the CD rec program.
Yes.
Okay. My other question is like sort of related, but do we know about free lunch and breakfast for our kids yet for the 23, 24 school year?
It is, it is.
It is, okay. I was trying to double-check, but I wasn't positive.
Yep.
So I appreciate that clarification. Just to backtrack, I knew everyone here was aware of what we had been talking about and voting on. So what I was saying, so folks knew what we voted on, I meant the public, just to clarify that. That's all. I yield.
Anything further on Witsen's? I need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
In a second. Bobby, second.
I have a motion in a second.
Mr. Agia.
You just can't hear him.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia. Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12-18 is a clarification and vote to approve the supervisor of utility service job description as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer, and Tom
Motion to approve.
Coogan, Human Resource Director. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pacheco.
So the, the job description hasn't changed from the last meeting. The title was a little, a little off. So this is the title that was approved in the reorg and also approved as part of the job descriptions with the reorg. And this is that revision. So nothing has changed in the job description, it's just the title.
Do I have a motion in a second, Deb?
Yeah, you do.
Do you please, any discussion? Anybody? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia. Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. I have a number of items for your information. Retirements.
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, which one did I miss? Oh, I'm sorry. The drive-in. The drive-in, I'm sorry. Discussion and vote to approve the use of Durfee High School parking lot to hold the Farver Drive-In movie night on August 25th as presented by Ken Pacheco.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second on the drive-in. I don't believe there'll be any discussion. Mr. Pacheco.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Ms. Roderick.
Are we only doing one this summer?
Yeah. What happened last year, the attendance had dwindled.
Mayor's out of money.
Huh? No, the mayor's not out of money. Relax. We'll wait and see what hap—
I couldn't hear that.
No, she made a snarky remark. It's your last day on the committee.
I'm here for the snarky remarks. I just couldn't hear it.
No, we, we're going to see how this one goes. We are talking about another one in the fall or around Halloween, but we're going to see how this one goes because the attendance last year was a little spotty on the first two. Ms. Roderick.
That's it.
We have a motion in a second, Deb?
Yep. Mr. Agia. Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. For your information, we have a number of retirements, resignations, appointments, usually regretfully, a few people, doesn't seem like it this time.
Motion to accept 3.1, 3.2, and 13-point, well, 13.1, 13.2.
A motion to accept them all? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia. Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Roderick.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee tonight?
I have a, I have a question, I guess.
Ms. Pereira.
Something. I was approached yesterday, but several times, I've been approached by, you know, residents in the community questioning the use of our fields and who gets to use it and who doesn't get to use it and why this school does, why out of, you know, town schools do. But I just, I'd like to, if we could, just if I could get an idea of who is using our fields here at Durfee and what's the process of being able to use it, I guess? Is there a process? And why would somebody be denied? Like, what are the rules that we're using to go by to determine who's able to use the field? Does that make sense? This way I can make sense of it because I, obviously, we have a beautiful place here. And obviously, I recognize this place belongs first to, you know, the scholars here at Durfee. But it's also a beautiful building that, you know, is paid for by every taxpayer who has children in elementary, middle, and what have you. So I just want to make sure that I can respond appropriately, that we're doing a good job sharing that. So if I could get that from whomever the powers it be.
Okay.
Thank you very much. That is all.
Anything further? 15, request for executive session. Mr. Assad, do we have a reason to go into executive session?
They're with me, Mayor.
Okay. Will you want to read those for us, please?
Sure. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve the executive session minutes for May 15, 2023, regular school committee meeting. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forward Administrative Association as the chair has determined that no possession may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Forward School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational, physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Forward Educators Association, as the chair has determined that no possession may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2186, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property located at 2501 South Main Street, Forward, Massachusetts, as of real property located at 2501 South Main Street, Forward, Massachusetts, as the chair has declared, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2082, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiation with non-union personnel, including Sandra Silver, payroll manager, community facilitators, instructional support liaisons, SEL liaisons, early childhood support staff, Jesse Gonzales, Guzman, Darlene Heisen, and Kelly Pereira, Clarice Ferreira, Jessica Roderick, Shannon Dunbar, Technology Department Computer Technicians, Stephen Anctil, Patrick Dubowski, Jason Olivera, Justin Reeves, Chad Als, Devon Costa, Brittany Estrella, Patrick Travaris, Gregory Scott, Dylan Camara,